Alrighty, let it hit continue. Okay. So I'm Colleen Nielsen, Director of Public Health. And today is the 25th and currently we have not had any new cases since August 21st. Our positivity rate is hovering below 1%, which is really great for us. And that's kind of been the trend for the last two weeks. So that can mean a few things really for our community. One, I want to thank everyone for doing really great at following following our social distancing and our physical distancing requirements and mask wearing and hand washing and staying away from others when they're sick. I think the other pieces that I'd like to talk to you guys about today is the state had come out with metrics this past weekend. It's still in draft form. We met yesterday with Kayla to show kind of what we had prior to us being able to really process and digest this document. So what we did between we being Kaylee and Josh and Beth really took the reins and we kind of we've now put in our information into what the state had. They had the same color bands, but they just meant different things. And we thought for consistency, it makes sense that if we follow the same color bands that the state does. So if someone jumps on the state page, they're like, wait a minute. Why does green mean this in, you know, the state, but green is something different here in Lake County? So I can show you what we've come up with. It does change in the sense that there isn't in this color band scheme for the state and now in turn for Lake County. It doesn't show that, hey, we're out of the pandemic and you know, we're, you know, no longer have any of these requirements in place. Their blue is actually their protector neighbor, which was similar to us. They just split out one of our categories to make it a little bit more specific so that you're really on the monitoring piece around positivity rate. Instead of making a big jump from like 10 to 20, there's like a now in between you like 10 to 15. I can show it to you if you guys want to see what we put in for lake numbers. The big metrics guide, and then I can show you the updated what would be forward facing to the public. As you know, everything on this metrics would have a trigger behind the scenes. We met with the school district yesterday to talk about some of those trigger points that would make sense and how it would fall into their color scheme and we might be able to have a possibility to have them change their color scheme a little bit just to be all in conjunction all the way across the board. So as you can imagine, it's been a huge undertaking and it's still a work in progress. It's not 100%. There's some things that we don't agree with from the state. And oh, sorry. There's some things that we don't agree in the state document in the sense of we feel that we could do some things probably in some of these phases where it's like, don't do anything. We think there's opportunity and we'll have that conversation at some of our other meetings like with business advocates and then our recovery group to see where our community feels comfortable with and what really makes sense for them. And some of those color bands, because some of it's like, oh, you can be, you know, here, but only group of 10. And then like for businesses, it worth it to be, you know, to have a front, a physical space open for people to come in verse. Hey, we can do all of this, you know, as a delivery option or takeout option or whatever that looks like. Like including retail and things like that, which we've had that opportunity to do way back when in March and April. So we know that our businesses are amazing and have a little bit more flexibility and want to be mindful of what they think they can accomplish and not necessarily put them in a position where, and all like I said, I'll go into that more tomorrow, but like where they're like, no, 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 like we don't want to be open. If we can only have 10 people in our establishment, we want to do this at this phase. And that's totally open for discussion. So if you want, I can kind of show you the big master document right now, just so you can take a look. And yeah, show my screen. Thank you. So where is my big Mac Daddy? Hold on. Because I have
You should be able to share, Colleen, can you share your screen? Okay.
I just have to, um, I have to bring that one to the front because I've got like eight documents open. So this is where we're at right now for Lake County. So as you can see, it looks different than what we had just seen last week. Knowing once again that we were in draft form and as you know, like this is just for us to have conversations around. This isn't like a public, hey, we're sending this out there in the scheme of it all, because we're still manipulating it and making it work for Lake County. So as you can see, they have five colors, just like we did, except a little bit different. Protect our neighbors is truly that next phase for us. We do have the ability with our numbers currently. We are now officially meeting all of the metrics from the state to move into protect our neighbor. Some of the pieces that we have to do for protect our neighbor is, and it's in progress, is complete a mitigation plan, which we are currently working on. And we, I mean, Kaylee and Josh are putting that together right now. For public health specific with our response to contact tracers and contest, contact investigators. We have to have our search plan and what that looks like for our ability to handle. If we do have an influx of cases, as you know, we do have nurses on staff dedicated to that. We are looking to hire a COVID-19 contact tracer specific, as well as we have eight volunteer nurses that are available. So it's just formalizing that whole entire plan. We have to get a patient agreement form or transfer agreement form from the hospital to show that yes, they, you know, they recognize all the places they can transfer, transfer patients to. And then we have to get to move into protect our neighbors. We have to get like city, BOCC and hospital to all agree that we feel comfortable that this is, you know, we're ready to move, that we have support basically to move into this next phase. And so if that's something, you know, as the BOCC feels, we're doing all these pieces regardless, so that we are poised. But it's just going to take us probably another week to put all of those pieces together. Because we only just hit that ability with our metrics from the last two weeks. Like I said, our positivity rate is below one, where we typically are between five and seven. And to go into protect our neighbor, you had to be below five. Or, you know, over two weeks, which we haven't been able to do until the last two weeks. It's like all these like this week and that week. And so needless to say, if that's the step we're looking to take, we're doing all this work behind the scenes to make sure that we're poised and ready. And, and then the pieces that are negotiable, as far as I'm concerned, moving forward is when you look at some of the industry specific pieces. You know, in red, it just, it pretty much, that is what the original, you know, state home order is. I think there might be some flexibility to kind of move between, sorry, I'm going to scroll up just so you can see the colors. You know, between orange and red to be like, hey, that's pretty high risk. What do our businesses feel that they want to do because they're still limited, you know, to 50% but gathering groups of 10, right, where that gathering size of 10. So is it worth it for them? Would it be more appropriate to put in other measures? That's what we're going to reach out and find out those pieces to make sure that this is reflective of our community. Not just kind of what the state's put out. And in that same vein, we know and protect our neighbor. A lot of their caps are much higher than ours in the sense of like up to 500 people. And that's just not something we really do not have any spaces that allow for social distancing and still have a gathering of 500 people, if you will. So at this point, we put it at 250. It's still 50% capacity. And so that might increase for some of our local businesses who have the ability to maybe, you know, service a few more. But I think for most of our businesses, because currently we're at 50% you know, 50% or 50, whichever is less. And so at this point, if we had some of the other places like restaurants, offices, bars, gyms, if they had the ability to still social distance, because in any of these levels, none of that goes away. That's still part of the equation that there might be opportunity to serve a few more people in some of these areas. And obviously I don't believe that will hit 250, but at this point in time, that's kind of was our starting point. And as a county, we can say, no, we feel like we want to keep it at, you know, 100, max out of 100 at all places. And I honestly think when I think of a lot of our spaces that we don't even have that ability. When there's any kind of space that still has to remain at 50%. Like, as you can imagine, these guidelines were written for across the state where you have some mega, you know, venues, if you will, which we do not have here. So like if we're comfortable with 250 or if we want to lower that number, those are some of the places that we have the ability to kind of finesse at this point in time until we all feel comfortable, everyone's weighed in. And then we can kind of push that out bigger so folks understand kind of what's happening behind the scenes. The other document I will show that you guys have seen is the forward facing one that is the, the one that I had showed last week. And obviously it's changed since then because of the fact that we now have some guidance from the state. Once again, the state guidance is in draft. And as we know, some things could drastically change and hence why we're still in a draft form as well. We don't feel comfortable like we did it 100% and then find out that the state is either added something, taking something out. And we want to be as aligned as possible because we think that makes sense. But as you can see, it's kind of what we've seen before. So this has changed literally since yesterday. And we've added to be in conjunction with the state. And so our blues now, it, well, our blue is still protect our neighbors, but our green moved into the next one, which is our, so this is just the industry guidance, which we will change because this is literally just cut and pasted from the other document to make sense for us. And the green is still, you know, level one, it's still safer at home. It's cautious, still following all those social distancing protocols. And then we still have our specific that we know that we want to keep in there. The state was a little bit more general about some of the criteria, but we feel for us, it's important folks to recognize that we're looking at all these different parameters to base our decisions. And in any of these phases, it takes two weeks to be, to be able to move into the next phase and or, you know, backwards. So even if we started to see some increase, that's not an automatic move into the next phase. It has to be, you know, we have two weeks to work on some mitigation factors, which will be in our plan to ensure that, you know, we're following through. And also circumstances, right, of the cases that we're seeing in the sense of, oh, we recognize that this was a large event. We're probably need a lot more versus we have widespread community spread everywhere. Versus, hey, we can kind of link it to all these other cases. So I think those are like important pieces to keep in mind. So currently, if we were like the other day, I said yellow, but with this new color band, we would take, we would be in green and we were poised to go into blue and protect our neighbor. And like I said, that the advantage of that is, you know, the ability to gather in a little bit larger group sizes. But for us, like we are limited just because of our community versus others. But it gives us a little bit more local control and and so that's kind of where we're at. And so obviously we did that all the way through to all the different colors. And you guys have seen this, just not the latest updated, which literally we finished. We being Beth Elke. He finished this about 10 minutes earlier. And so I can stop anywhere, like I don't want to make it confusing if I'm scrolling. You're like, wait, I want to see X and I can show you whatever that is.
Can you scroll down just a little bit, Colleen?
Yeah. So currently we are, you know, we're actually, we have the ability to move into blue if we want to scroll up to blue to see what those criterias that are met.
Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Of course.
Does, does this have in it something similar to that table about industry specific capacity? Or is that just a behind the scenes kind of thing?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Yep. And like I said, we, uh, this is pretty consistent about where we're at right now. But I think we have to, we have to make a decision on either end. Instead of it being 100% closed down on red, do we have the ability and/or orange? If, if businesses are like, hey, not worth it for me to be open. And people can make those decisions, but I think if we have something that's a little bit more Lake County specific. And, and there might, you know, there would have to be opportunity to kind of make our case at the state, depending on what's happening. Like I said, I think we, I think I had mentioned this the other day, like I can't imagine that Lake County becomes like the hotspot and we're in red and everyone else is, you know, in blue or green. It's more than likely what's going to happen to us is stuff is happening around us, which might push us in either direction. Or excuse me, might move us backwards and or positive depending. I always like to think positively, but the reality is like, if we find out that there's hospitals that we don't have the ability to transfer to, that affects our indicators. And so it's not, as you can imagine, once again, as we've talked from the beginning, like we are so linked to so many of our surrounding communities and resources that, you know, we have to be on top of those and watching those as well. And I can scroll down more up or whichever way you need.
That looks good. Um, so then I guess my question is, could we say this is like the minimum type of thing, like if we had to go back, this is the minimum at which you could operate. And then I would imagine you would leave that up to each individual establishment in the industry to make that determination if they wanted to close and do only takeout or whatever, right?
Yes, absolutely. Like anyone can always go more strict than what we're asking them to do. But I think what I would really like is our document, like I said, we're going to introduce this to the business advocacy just to have that conversation. So when we have that opportunity to also work with the recovery group, the meeting I believe is next Thursday, not this Thursday, that we can say, hey, does this make sense? And we have the ability to reach out from public health to retail specific, you know, excuse me, retail food, but not everyone else. So that's hopefully where we have that ability to bridge some of the work we're doing with our, you know, business advocates to say, hey, is there, you know, to weigh in on it essentially.
Okay.
And open for, you know, suggestions in the sense of, hey, this would be a really good pathway to do, to introduce it or whatever that looks like. Obviously we're open for, you know, any kind of ideas that way. And I know that, you know, obviously Beth works on the communication piece with so many other agencies and businesses. So if there's something that we can be doing to, um, once we kind of get a little bit more finalized, like I said, I do know that I want to make some changes in it, but it's just the start again.
Sarah, I think I saw you on mute. Do you want to go ahead?
I just, I, I, I see Lori's question in the chat about what can, her question is what concerns are there with upcoming school? You're starting and what can we do to proactively address those concerns? Colleen, do you want to speak to that a little bit? And I don't know. You know, I mean, just on a very simple level, of course, the schools are, have their own plan and are doing cohorts or online learning. As far as any projected implications to how that might affect the greater community? Do you want to speak to any conversations that I've been had there and how we can support that?
Yeah, I know. Thank you for that almost unplanned, but a segue because having met with the district superintendent specifically yesterday, we're talking about if we have that opportunity to move into the blue phase for us to really feel stable, that, you know, we're keeping all of our, you know, cases below, you know, 10%. I think it's 5%. Sorry. See, now I gotta go look in the blue one because we just changed it like 20 minutes ago. But that the superintendent feel confident, felt confident that, hey, can they get some leeway? Because we know right now they are studying, starting in the hybrid. So it's in-person cohorts every other day to cohorts. There's also a fully online option for those. And so, you know, the intent truly is to bring everyone back in with all of these layers of protection. And so once again, when you think about our color bands, we recognize that if we move in to protect our neighbor, which is our blue and to the school at this point in time would be that bringing, meaning that they can be, you know, in person. That doesn't mean that we stop social distancing, that we stop wearing masks, that we stop, you know, cleaning high touch surfaces, that we stop washing our hands. It's still doing those pieces. But we also recognize that the school and the spaces are limited. So the layer of protection that would back, that would come away from having all the students present in a classroom would truly be that six foot social distancing. That's just something that just is impossible to maintain when you have all students in a classroom. And so that became the conversation of how do we plan for that? Do we, you know, do we wait while we're in the blue, you know, if we get into protect our neighbor? And for them to have that opportunity to start four weeks and then maybe need an additional two weeks to transition into in-person? Which then in turn would mean if the county is able to support, if they're able to continue that second day piece, does everybody know what I'm talking about when I'm talking about second day?
Is that the 100 Elk?
Yes, 100 Elk. Thank you, Kayla. And so basically there's opportunity for those cohorts that are in, you know, who go to school Monday, Wednesday. They would go to a second day at 100 Elk, which is Buena Vista on Tuesday, Thursday. And so right now that is supported for four weeks. But if, if the school extends the hybrid for an additional two weeks while they're preparing to bring everyone back in, if there's an opportunity for the county to possibly support some of that, they're not, you know, they're still trying to line up funding like everybody else is. But I think that would be, if we're talking about something being proactive, is having that conversation of is there ability to use care's funding to support two additional weeks of second day funding? And if so, how do we connect everyone together to make that, you know, proposal formal? And or like I said, as you know, everyone's always looking for that, that funding piece. And so we don't know, I'm like, as of yesterday, Bethany didn't know if that's the ask overall versus if there's even an opportunity. And there's an opportunity, then I think that's the, that's the proactive piece. Hey, we're prepared to support the school for two additional, you know, two more additional weeks. I don't know what that looks like. Then that would have to be like a BOCC. I mean, I'm more than happy to be the, you know, the go between or, I wouldn't even say go between, but you know, the liaison, if you will, of, hey, we have these questions for the school. This is everything we need to know. And that's, that's an easy email to me and to Bethany and whatnot. But I think that's the piece, like I'm looking at the question. That might, you know, that might be an ask here. If we can go into the blue phase, otherwise, you know, they maintain hybrid, but there's no opportunity for second day. Past the four weeks currently. And I think as far as concerns, I think, you know, anything else, as anything, this is all new to everybody. Like there's always some risk involved. It's, you know, doing your best with the resources we have. And we're making the recommendations based on everything we know today. We know that could change tomorrow or the next day, and then we just have to readjust. And that's been the name of the game from the beginning.
Okay, Colleen, I just wanted to ask kind of a clarifying question about that piece with, with the school district. Is this hybrid model then intended to flow through at least the first semester? Is that what I'm hearing you say or?
No, it sounds like, right. If we have the ability to move into protect our neighbor, like I said, I think that's where we're headed. If the board's like, no, let's pursue that because we're sitting good. Does that even? We're sitting well for the last two weeks with our positivity rate and, you know, and we haven't had any major like social gatherings and/or holidays. Of course, I get nervous about Labor Day coming up and seeing that spike go up. And so the point I recognize is the school district, specifically the board, is interested in how soon can we move into, you know, all kids in class four days a week?
Okay.
And so it sounds like they're having a meeting on September 8th. And so if we are going to move into protect our neighbor, you know, I'm hoping to submit early next week if I get to go ahead. I mean, obviously we're still doing all the behind the scenes, so we'll be poised and ready. And, um, and then that will open up the door, if you will, for the school district to feel, you know, more comfortable or the school board to really be like, hey, if we're really in this protect our neighbors and our positivity rate is low, then do we have the opportunity to bring, you know, our students all in four days a week? I mean, still with the social distancing, you know, with the hand hygiene and the, you know, they would still be eating in the lunch or excuse me, oh my gosh, in classrooms and things like that. The only piece that would probably, the one layer of protection that would step out is, is the six foot distance while they're physically in the classroom. But, you know, masks would still be there and hygiene. I mean, you know, staying home when you're sick, everyone's getting screened as you may or may not know. And so, yeah.
Um, so should we set up another meeting with Bethany then to talk about that hybrid model and what their, what their plan is, do you think, Sarah? Would you be? If I could set that up with Bethany, maybe for next Tuesday?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
And I imagine they are. Yeah. Sorry, I wanted to ask a question that's probably more a question for Bethany. On, on, on the sense of families and students. I'm wondering what that looks like going back to full four days. But I imagine that they're getting that sense or they will have that sense in the first few weeks of school opening. I just wonder if, if families really have a sense of security in this because of the hybrid model? And to push it into four days a week at home, has any, has that concern come up, Colleen? In your conversation?
The other way?
As far as, well,
Where it would be like into their red face where they would, it would be all online at that point?
No, 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 no. I mean, I mean, the, I guess the ideal, like how is the ideal set to go back to four days a week? Which I'm not necessarily arguing, I'm just curious what that, what the concerns of the families? If families have had concerns or the secure, or have this sense of safety in that hybrid model particularly?
Yeah, no, I, I don't have an answer to that, but I totally recognize what you're saying in the sense. And I think that's, that's a great question. I'm wondering, because I know that orientation is this weak for schools, if they're getting a better sense of that where, right? If, I mean, honestly, we know that the high school needs to stay in the hybrid model just because of the way their students flow and everything else. So even if it's all back in person, it really would only be younger grades and not necessarily the high school. Because of that fact, like they can't, they lose even more layers of protection if they went, you know, back in. And so, but obviously I can't speak for the high school and then Ben might have a different idea like, no, I figured it out. But, um, but I totally hear what you're saying that, right? Or some people are just comfortable to be like, hey, do we stay in hybrid? But obviously that's such a school board decision. And, but I, I think that's a great question and a great way to gauge, you know, families in that respect. I think, you know, I know, I would just share like on personal, right? I went in for my child's orientation and they talked about like our internet access, our, you know, ability to do, you know, online and things like that. And so I'm wondering if they're just gathering, you know, some of those pieces of, you know, what that bigger need is, what that looks like. And maybe that's a bigger conversation as well with the county.
Yeah, yeah. And how, if we, I mean, if we are seeing, I mean, depending on what activity happens in the next few weeks, right? Will you be there to encourage them one way or the other? I mean, yes, it's a school board decision, but if we're, you know, if trends and all signs may be pointing to like, hey, we don't know that that's the best for public health and safety.
No, I understand that. And I think what'll be really telling is seeing what's happening in other counties that have gone, you know, all in from the get-go. And I think that'll be probably part of that conversation of, hey, we've seen it. It's actually working or not working depending. And I think that would help base, you know, our recommendation, if you will.
Yeah. Yeah. Good point.
And I think that's a good point too. It's like, hey, if folks are really comfortable, but you know, don't really have the resources, the ability to offer second day. I don't, I couldn't imagine if that's something that would happen all, you know, all through the semester as well. So I think there has to be recognition too of families of, hey, we know a second day for the first four weeks, possibly another two depending. But then, you know, are you still able to sustain at that point? I don't know.
Right, right. And then the online learners will remain online.
Right. They do not have the ability to, right, switch out.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. Like I think it's, you know, as it continues to be a moving piece, you know, a moving puzzle with a lot of pieces and the pieces change and the players change as well. So, but I do feel good about the work in the documents that we are kind of putting forward so that we really feel that we're in a good position to kind of, everyone can be like, okay, this makes sense. So that when we come back, like, all right, this is what we're seeing. And I think, you know, that, that's a way to establish the rhythm and the communication of, hey, we're going to share out like we're in this phase. This is a criteria we're meeting, you know, weekly, so people know where we're at. And then, you know, and then obviously for the board, if we continue our meetings at one on Tuesday, if that's still a work or if there's something else we have to do in it, you know, additionally on the side or Kayla, you know, Kayla and I one-on-one and then bring you back to the big group. Like, I think, um, taking advantage of this time and making sure that we really are thinking ahead and being prepared, which we didn't have that luxury, you know, back in March. And we really haven't had that luxury until like the last couple of weeks, so.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Colleen at this point? No? All right. Thank you, Colleen. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Cool. And so we'll move on to meet with Sheriff Reyes about some requests for staffing. So Sheriff Reyes, I'm going to turn it over to you so you can talk through kind of what your request is and what we're needing to look at here.
So what I'm requesting is that we, I'm not asking for additional budget, but I'm asking to rearrange items in my budget to allow for an additional deputy. What we've seen since COVID is an uptick in violent crime here. I was just kind of going over some of the statistics recently. And we, since March, have had nine weapons calls where guns have been involved. And last year at this time, we had zero. So, um, we've seen an increase in assaults. Last year at this time, we had 26, we're up to 37 assaults. So I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but that's actually quite a bit. And it takes quite a bit of man hours. And what I'm hoping to do is be able to put two deputies on, on a night shift and on a day shift. The way our shifts are now is that we have one during the day, one during the mid, which is a swing and then one at night. So I'm hoping, and then we have a supervisor that overlaps. So what I'm hoping to do is have two deputies on at all times. So I, what I'm doing is taking from my IT director position and I had a part-time dispatch. dispatch position that I had asked for in this year's budget, and absolve from that to add a new deputy, which would leave after fringe benefits, would leave approximately $38,000 left over in my salaries.
Okay. So you would, you would have that remaining in your salaries at the end of the year, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to find this, the spreadsheet that you sent me. My email's not uploading in my, on my computer, so I'm trying to look at it on my cell phone.
So what it would look like, let's see, the remainder, the remaining funds right now, I'm at approximately $216,000 in my, um, employee funds.
Okay. So you have, um, let's see here.
Kayla, is it something you want me to, do you want me to share a screen on that?
Um, if you could, that'd be great. I don't know why my email is not working. Sorry.
Because you wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Sarah, if you want to share it, that, that'd be fine.
Is that working?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So that's it. Where, should we look? Sorry, I can't quite tell. Can you see the full sheet?
So if you look over in column M, down at the bottom, where it says 216, 486, that's where I'm at right now, remaining leftover. And what I've done is budgeted on the high end for new employees to take the most expensive benefit package. Because we never know what somebody may or may not need.
Mm-hmm. Amy, are you gonna, um, are you hiring two deputies so that there can be two?
Yes.
So, so the, the part-time dispatch position and the IT position will not be budgeted for any longer, at least through 2020?
Correct. Because right now, just the way our call volume is going, I think it would be more prudent to have extra people on the street.
And are those, is that the same, I presume that that's the same, um, salary, uh, scale?
Yes, ma'am.
That we currently have in place?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any, I don't think I have any big questions or concerns there.
I don't. Commissioner Glenn, um, if you want to hit star six to unmute yourself, if you have any questions or concerns for Sheriff Reyes, you're welcome to, um, chat with her at this time. I'm trying to.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Yeah, I don't seem to have any questions or concerns about that at this time either. Um, I know that from the Friends of Twin Lakes, they've, you know, talked about the increase in volume down south. Um, there's an increase in volume and calls and child protective services.
All the way around.
Yeah, all related to the pandemic particularly. Um, so yeah, I, I don't seem to have any problems. And we, we did talk about this, um, yesterday with, um, our jail conversation as well, Sarah, in planning with the Justice Center of, you know, we don't have data, necessarily hard number data, just because we've had such a tough time with staffing and capacity there that, you know, we, we've had to pick and choose calls essentially. Um, and so that kind of robs us of that concrete data we need, um, for things like that SIMs mapping and, and, uh, and our bed count and space for the Justice Center.
Amy? Oh, go ahead. Excuse me, Sheriff, sorry. Um, what, um, are, are, is there a, are there any challenges, um, with calls in the city or any partnership with the PD that we can also support with? Um, as far as your deputies being called out or requested?
No, I mean, I think that's how we've been able to make things work, um, amongst both agencies. We have had several instances where we've had huge fights, where we require the police department to come out and assist us. Um, I mean, it's, I would say it's both a give and take on both sides. I know that we're both, both agencies are, are definitely feeling overwhelmed with the call volume, especially, um, COVID added an interesting twist to it with domestic violence and the increase in calls there. But now, when the fires shut down the highways and just having extra people camping and in our community, that definitely changed things.
Okay. What's our next step, Sarah?
Uh, I think that, well, if there's not a concern, um, I appreciate the request on the budget since we are, you know, holding kind of freezing vacancies and appreciate reaching out for the conversation with the board. Um, and I don't have, I don't have any concern addressing the need
No.
and making that, and having you make that shift as you proposed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, um, too, Amy. So thank you for bringing that to us and collaborating with us on that. I really do appreciate that. Um, I know that, that there have been some additional costs with transports and housing inmates because of COVID. We might, do you, Sarah, do you know if we're able to use CARES funding for that? We might be able to use CARES funding for that, I think.
I would presume so. I have not looked into that, but that was, um, that was a thought of, that I had as well, Sheriff, when you mentioned that on one of our last, uh, on the last Justice Center meeting. Um, and I, I just kind of think of that as replenishing the general fund and that, you know, how, uh, the inflation to, um, your budget in the expense of transporting and whatnot. And we can, I think we can have Crystal calculate that for us? Or do you already have that calculated, Amy, on what that projection might look like through the end of the year, needing to bring folks to Bent County?
Um, see, I was not anticipating needing to bring people all the way to Bent County and to Custard County. Um, that was, yeah, that was something that just recently changed. So what, I'm not familiar with the CARES Act, so whatever you need from me, as far as numbers, I can get those to you so we can work on replenishing the general fund because that is a three-hour drive one way. Um, and that's on a good day. It's probably more like four. So, because it's in Los Anamis County.
Right.
Amy, if you and I want to kind of work on that together, um,
Absolutely.
I'll, Sarah, what I'll do is I'll ta, I'll take that through legal to make sure it fits in the CARES Act and ask Dola if it fits. Um, and then see what we can do to get reimbursed and what documentation I need from you, Sheriff.
Okay, yeah, I will get whatever you need.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, um, for joining us today and for bringing that to us, Sheriff. I appreciate, um, the conversation and, and hearing about your need and happy that we can work together on that. So, um, go ahead and you can make those adjustments and then we'll move it forward.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thanks. Have a great day.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye. Um, Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything before we, uh, adjourn or log off today that you'd like to chat about or discuss or?
No, not at this time. I don't have anything.
All right. Commissioner Mudge, how about you?
No.
All right. Well, I think that's it. And then tomorrow, we'll have, um, a meeting with the Unmet Needs Committee to talk further through that, um, potential eviction process and those types of things and, um, go from there. So, all right, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn today at 1:43. Thanks.